...September twenty-third, two thousand and thirteen. Would you all please rise for the flag of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we thank you who are on the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Fraser.
Here.
Mr. Jordan.
Here.
Mr. Seymour.
Yes.
Mr. President, if you need to.
Mr. Warren, here.
Here.
I would ask members of the audience, if you have a cell phone, to please turn it off or on vibration. And before we get started this evening, I want to alert any of you that are here for several of the public hearings that were advertised every month and that have been postponed at the request of the petitioner, not by council. So we've been, each of the projects that was to come before us this evening, the various petitioners had asked that they wanted a little more time to tweak or reconsider their project. So we're going to move right into our presentation. And our first presentation is the premiere of a Southfield-based movie that is going to be premiering Thursday night, I understand, at the Star Southfield Theater. There's a red carpet reception prior to the event and a showing of the film. And so I would like to call up, I think I'm referring this to Ms. Jordan, who'll do the rest of the introduction.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have three individuals in our audience this evening, two of them that in Southfield have produced a previous film that will be showing this Thursday at the conference star, and that is Mr. Walter Marshall, Mr. Tomashion Jones, and Mr. Darryl Bradford. If they could come up to the podium and even give us just a little insight into the movie that's being produced, and we really want to let the public know that they worked hard to produce the film, to get to this point, and to even have it shown in May 3, of which we are very proud. And two of these gentlemen, my husband actually married, and I know that they're teenagers, so we are very proud of them and the accomplishments that they've made, the skills that they have.
Good evening, today's Southfield. We'd like to thank you for having us.
Want the people at home to hear?
Okay. All right. We'd just like to thank you for having us tonight, and just let you know that we are committed to our station, Tomashion and I, we both live here. We've also been here for many years, just being connected with the Christian community. We produce a Christian film titled Above It Hurts, and we wanted to educate ourselves and learn about the process of making a film. So I have a degree in filmmaking, Tomashion has a bachelor's degree in manufacturing engineering. Darryl has a degree from Michigan State in telecommunications. We're also, Darryl and I, we are indie nominated producers. So before we made this film, we wanted to invest our time, energy in researching other filmmakers, really to give our best effort, because we were investing our hard-earned dollars. So the total of twenty-five thousand dollars that we invested in the film, and we used the best equipment available to us, we used the best talent available to us, and it was a very, very exceptional film. We received great response this morning, and this Thursday night, we are having a red carpet premiere. We have sponsors from across our nation, and we will be documenting it and sending out to people so that they will see our beautiful city, Southfield, here and what we're doing. So we would like to share a trailer, and then I would give more words than I'd rather do.
And let me do the trailer. You are.
We've seen our fair share of painful events. Been married forty years. We've seen our fair share of painful events. But God, He tells us how we love Him, even when it hurts. Marriage, picture perfect, and there, and unless you marry, you realize all the hard work you take. Sometimes you work so hard and manage, but you work against each other. When you first introduced me to Chris, he was doing everything for your attention, and I was like, nothing. Seems like he's got an interest in us.
I just don't understand some men sometimes. It's like, she doesn't appreciate me when my career is doing well. I don't know how, and you're not giving me a break. I'm trying to find the best way I can.
So what did the preacher have to say? He said that I shouldn't be selfish, but I love Chris in a sacrificial way by laying down my life now. Why? So Chris can walk on his feet? Girl, there is nothing wrong with you.
See, it comes down to this with women. They need affection, they need cheering, and they need commitment, and they need to know that they're number one. You're right. But it doesn't matter, because I'm always wrong. You never appreciate anything I do right, and I was bringing money in this house, and you still find a way to tear me down.
There you go. We can't agree on anything, everything, Chuck, it's ours. You think Chris is helping you?
As Jesus said, "Everyone who acknowledges me, hunk of your own." I will acknowledge for my Father in heaven. That one, he's laying on his story, he's coming, but he's there for you. Your enemy will be the one that's there in your own house. If you cling to your life, you will lose it. But if you give up your life for me, you will fight.
Sounds kind of heavy.
So this Thursday, a lot of our success, our future, again, on Thursday night determines how much we can reinvest. Right now, we have a few distributors looking at our film, and they will be giving us offers on what they will do with it as our desire to retain the film so we can continue to further it and just maintain ownership. We have many other ideas for filmmaking, and we will continue to make more movies, but, you know, we will have to create it with our budget, you know, to be successful with the film. So, and the one thing that we're really proud of is the Christian community here in Southfield, they're just coming together and supporting us. The one church that we studied when making this film, they made their first film for twenty thousand dollars, and then they went on to make other films, and now they're making films by grossing thirty million dollars. So, you know, our film is in that, that range of quality with the church, local church in their Southfield. Now, I'm a member of Highland Park, Tomashion and I, we met at Family Victory, a publisher here in Southfield, and also Christian Tabernacle, they were a host church, helping us promote the market for film. So with the church community coming together, we know that we can create more jobs and also give more to our city. So we're hoping that the city of Southfield will, you know, have a heart in its efforts and just being here in Southfield.
Tell us what time on Thursday night, if people, anybody in town, right to the panel?
Anyone. So we have two different showings. We're going to have a red carpet experience, that's where you take professional pictures on the red carpet, that's going to start at seven, seven p.m., and then we have Zero Emission, you want to arrive at seven-thirty. The movie starts at eight p.m., but we don't have trailers or anything like that, the movie starts at seven-thirty. This is our program.
All right. And I understand some of the talent that's in the film, the actors are vocal quotes?
Yes, they are.
All right. Shout out their names.
Sure. T.J. Hensfield, he's director of Fairness Commons, is a big production through our city also, one international. Iana Fola, Matthew Boucher.
Delorean Martin. With the Southfield Schools project?
Yes, he is. At Southfield High. And it's a very hard job.
So, or Tom Paul?
This is how we cast, and we really hope that the community does come out and support the talent, and to hear the great talent that's being shown.
This is a full-length?
This is a full-length film, ninety-five minutes. We filmed for thirty days in two thousand and eleven, took us four years to produce it. We used police officers, Channel Seven, and we sponsored one, one day, covered the story, and then we also had City Fire Department also play the part.
Perfect. Ms. Jordan, cover Miss Seymour.
Were you involved at all with the connection with the theater group that was here, originally that was brought in to help out? You know, we started theater with Michigan, up here in Michigan, so were you in any way tied into that?
No.
No film career?
Well, I actually went to film school, and I didn't want to go to New York or California, I wanted to return home.
You know, I was going to say to, every story, or Miss Seymour's, but I want to come back to that, would you just, go ahead?
I think it's great to have that talent here, and you've got a lot of talent here that we haven't heard about, so I'm delighted that you've come forward and you can be doing this, and I hope you stay here and do a lot with us, I think that'd be great. And we'll give you plenty of that advice.
I look at the three of you, and I think we're, we talk a lot about retaining and attracting young people to our community, so thank you for being here, doing something locally, and staying here to promote Southfield. A lot of young people leave for other public places, the coast of Chicago or whatever, but I'm glad you're here. So forward to seeing the film.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I would like to have another exciting event coming up in Southfield that's been very popular, so I'm going to call on Tony M. Marcos Vano, our director of the Southfield Chamber of Commerce, to tell us about the upcoming City of Southfield event.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm here with me, of course, you know, Shelley Freeman. We wanted to come in front of the council to kind of discuss our Daisy Southfield. As Mr. Cyrus said, it's October eighth, it's going to be at the Town Center atrium, from five to seven-thirty. We have approximately twenty restaurants, three of which are new from last year. We'll have live entertainment, and tickets are twenty dollars in advance and twenty-five dollars at the door. And if you need tickets for council with Miss Banks, and if you need additional, please do let us know. We will have live entertainment, should be a fun event. Last year, we saw probably about five hundred or so people who are participating, hopefully, and should be a good time. This year, instead of the Detroit service, we've got idle dancers who are going to be there, so just another event added to our night of entertainment.
The only thing I wanted to add is there's plenty of free parking in the parking structure, so we know that sometimes it gets a little congested in the parking lot, but we have it well marked out, so we want the business community and the residents to come out and enjoy the event, and not be deterred from the parking, so it's really easy and numerous in the structure, we'll have signage to make it really easy for everyone to come out and enjoy themselves. And there's tons of food, so we're looking forward to another great time.
How about calling up some of the restaurants and repeating the date and the time?
Sure. The date's October eighth, from five to seven-thirty at the Town Center atrium. Some of the restaurants, Paco, Pizzeria Vida, we've got beans and cornbread, and their new Southern Nash, which is vegetarian. We've got Olden, they're new this year. They're avoiding me at the moment, but all the fabulous restaurants we have in the community, so they'll all be there.
Wonderful.
Thank you.
All right. We'll see you on October eighth.
Thank you.
All right. Next, it's my pleasure to call Larry Williams onto the podium. Mr. Williams is the Michigan Big Brother of the Year at Mayor, if you'll join me. And let me just say, before we read the proper information from the mayor and the council, that most of you know Big Brothers Big Sisters for around a long time, and this summer, Big Brothers Big Sisters selected a Big Brother and a Big Sister of the Year, and so locally, we're very pleased to find that in our midst is Larry Williams, who is the Big Brother of the Year. So, Mr. Williams, this moment is for you. Whereas, this is a joint, again, joint resolution in recognition of Larry Williams from the mayor and council of City of Southfield. Whereas, local resident Larry Williams Sr. has been a Big Brother Big Sister volunteer since two thousand and ten, serving as the big to little Arceo. Whereas, for more than a hundred years, Big Brothers and Big Sisters have operated under the belief that inherent in every child is the ability to succeed and thrive in life. As the nation's largest donor and volunteer-supported mentoring network, Big Brothers Big Sisters makes meaningful monitored magic between adult volunteers, the bigs, and children, the littles, ages six through eighteen, in communities across the country. Annually, Big Brothers Big Sisters of America recognizes Big of the Year in both state and in the state and national level. Whereas, Mr. Williams was selected as Big Brother Big Sisters National Office from a group of nominated bigs throughout Michigan as the two thousand and twelve Big Brother Year Award recipient for his exemplary performance as a big brother and his demonstrated impact on the life of his little brother. And whereas, Big Brothers Big Sisters takes pride in providing positive role models for youth, youth facing adversity, who cultivate progress in their academic studies, the avoidance of risky behaviors, and an improvement in their socio-emotional competency. And whereas, each nominated big has made a significant impact on the life of their little, they also are dedicated advocates and fundraisers for Big Brothers Big Sisters. As the Michigan Big Brother of the Year, Mr. Williams represents Michigan and Big Brothers Big Sisters of Metropolitan Detroit. And whereas, Mr. Williams' little brother, Arceo, not unlike many young men today, was not living up to his potential. Despite his obvious intelligence, he was not performing as well as he could in school. And whereas, during their meetings, the pair talked about what was needed to be done to improve his grades and his situation. Whenever they were together, Mr. Williams made a point to let his little know that he believed in him and his abilities, and that the right focus and effort, with the right focus and effort, his potential was limitless. And whereas, after much hard work and determination, Arceo eventually earned a four-point-oh, grade-point average, increased his self-confidence, and a positive outlook on his life and future, all due in great part from the sustained support, encouragement, and involvement of his big, Larry Williams. Now therefore be it resolved that we, the mayor and council of City of Southfield, County of Oakland, State of Michigan, do hereby recognize and congratulate Larry Williams Sr. on being selected as the two thousand and twelve Michigan Big Brother of the Year. Be it further resolved that we, the mayor and council, convey a collective appreciation and commendation to Big Brothers Big Sisters and Mr. Williams for the significant impact that they are making in the lives of young people facing adversity by serving as positive role models. Congratulations.
I just want to add that Big Brothers are really hard to find, and that we so much appreciate what you have done. It shows an example what Southfield does to take care of the community. We also want to encourage more men to step up to be Big Brothers. We have Big Sisters who step up all the time, from the need for men, and the need for African-American men to step up and say that we are going to step in and be the bridge for the young men in our community, to bridge that gap when sometimes they get lost, so they can have some direction and get on the right track. So I just want to applaud you and thank you, and I want to get this, this is Hillary.
She's Jamie. From Big Brothers Big Sisters.
She's here, so if anyone wants to volunteer today, think about it, and be a Big Brother or a Big Sister, it's all good. So thank you both so much.
I would say thank the city council and the mayor for those great words. I really enjoyed being a Big Brother, and I do believe we can make a difference by just being good role models, good example status, and doing the right things. Kids are looking at us, and we show positive stuff, and we do the right things, they will love us. Thank you.
Before we move on, I want to make mention of the fact that Big Brothers Big Sisters of Metropolitan Detroit is having the big event, and it's Friday, October eighteenth, from eight p.m. to midnight in the County where atrium at Campus Marshes downtown. Again, that's Friday, October eighteenth. If you go online, correct, you can find ticket information to the big event, which is fundraiser for Big Brothers Big Sisters. Thank you very much. So, we're going to move on next to appointments, and our first appointment actually has already been approved, council two weeks ago approved the appointment of Mary Seth. Seth, good job.
Seth.
You know, Mary's going to take me. I practiced before the meeting. Anyhow, would you please come forward? We are pleased to be, as many may know, our longtime deputy city clerk, Susan Silva, retired several weeks ago, and so we are pleased with the appointment of Mary to, in the court section five point nine of the Southfield City Charter, City of Southfield. We are making this appointment. Miss Seth has been employed at the City of Southfield for the last twenty-eight years, and her career started in the city building department, and she's worked in human resources, forty-six district courts, and for quite a while now, she's been the police records coordinator in the Southfield Police Department. Her years of experience working in various city departments and as elected officials highlights her ability to meet the demands and expectations of the city clerk's office, and will bring a wealth of experience and knowledge to the position. So with that, that we are pleased to present our new deputy city clerk, and I believe, Miss Banks, you are going to be experiencing to make it official?
Yes, and her family is, was her family, is your family, by your side?
Oh, yes. My husband, George.
My husband, George. Hello.
My daughter Natalie, and my son Alexander. And I have extended family, sisters and brothers-in-law and aunts, and I'll have to be here with me today.
Okay, Mary, good reason, right here. Do you hereby swear or affirm that on September thirtieth, two thousand and thirteen, that you will faithfully support the Southfield City Charter as deputy city clerk for the City of Southfield, County of Oakland, State of Michigan, according to the best your ability?
I will. Honorable mayor, council, and city attorney, Seymour, city administrator, Jim Schreit, and city clerk, Nancy Banks, I thank you for this opportunity. I served in the Robyn's City for twenty-eight years, very proudly, and look forward to being here.
We're going to ask you to come around and shake hands with the council and mayor. And, Mr. Jordan, can we have the screen and the projector? And again, that's Mary Seth.
Seth.
I'm very sorry, but I will get it. Okay. Next, we're going to move on to several appointments, and mayor, these are yours, so we'll, have you introduce this item?
Yes. Council, you have me for your question of the year. Natalie, we had a Chinese family challenge, and she'll ask that we go home and to the next meeting, if he would like to be here, the people who are white. But I'm also happy to present to you tonight, after Stephen Reed from Oakland, he's a board. Many of you now have him, leadership with Oakland County Community College has been exceptional, and the fact that he is holding the reins for our own city's community college here, has, he has demonstrated leadership. But he has served on the Downtown Development Authority for a number of years, and has done so well, and he has more than a vested interest in seeing the success of this area, and we appreciate his leadership, and we feel with more intention to reappoint him for another term.
Need a motion, council?
Mr. President, I make a motion at this. We appoint you to Downtown Development.
Sure. Convened by Ms. Jordan, supported by Mr. Fraser. Almost in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. Get back on.
Thank you very much. I might add that it's been a pleasure working with the City of Southfield. We are very gratified to be here in this community and to be serving the residents of Southfield, and we look forward to many, many years of collaborative behavior in the best interests of the community and the residents. Thank you.
Do you hereby swear or affirm that you will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the state, and the Southfield City Charter, and that you will faithfully perform the duties on the Southfield Downtown Development Authority and for the City of Southfield, County of Oakland, State of Michigan, according to the best of your ability?
I do.
And Dr. Reif, we're particularly pleased to have you as part of the Downtown Development Authority Board as OCC has its presence in the district.
Well, thank you very much. I think that you have a fine organization there. And I would say this is doing a wonderful job.
And once you sign, we're going to have you come and speak with the council.
Thank you.
All right, the next item on our agenda is approval of minutes.
Mr. President, I move for the approval of the regular minutes of the regular meeting of July 29th, 2013, and the special meeting of August 19th, 2013.
Subor. Been moved by Mr. Lam, supported by Mr. Fraser. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. All right, next, we're going to move to the consent agenda. And this evening, we have only three items on our consent agenda. Item A is the authorization to purchase ammunition to the police department. This authorization will allow the police department to purchase ammunition from Spirit Gold Dot and federal premium ammunition for training and field operations from Kessler's Fleet Supply in Jefferson, Indiana, the sole distributor in the state of Michigan for this ammunition. Funds are provided for this purpose in the 2013-14 police department budget. Item B is... It's been requested by the petitioner, Lawrence Technological University, for a one-year extension for the new LTU campus student dormitory. And this extension would... We've already approved this, so this would extend the approval for one year from today, September 23rd, 2014. And the last item on our consent agenda is a bid for printing the 2014 annual report and city calendar to airborne lithographic of LaMonah, Michigan, in the amount of $25,358.83, the funds provided for this purpose in the 2013-14 community relations budget. Counsel, is there anything that you wish to have both from the consent agenda? Hearing none, then I'll take a motion. Mr. President? Yes.
I move that we approve consent agenda items CAA, CAB, and CAC.
Support. Been moved by Mr. Fraser and supported by Ms. Jordan. Now, Mr. Lam?
I'm here. I have an objection to this site plan.
Where in that area? Where the consent agenda?
On Lawrence Tech.
Well, I'm against the vote.
Oh, oh, I see. I'm sorry. I put your rule.
Okay. So, what I will do, Mr. Lam, if I amend the motion, then since we have a technical consideration here. Item... Mr. Fraser, did you amend your motion to CAA and CAC?
Yes, I will.
Okay. So, all those in favor of supporting consent agenda items A and C? Seem satisfied by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. All right. Then we'll take separately consent agenda item B. Again, it's a one-year extension. We've already approved this site plan for Lawrence Technological University to build a second student dormitory on property at home. May I have a motion to put this on the floor? And then, anything else? It's been moved by Ms. Jordan, this team, or... And supported by Ms. Jordan. All right, comments, further comments? Mr. Lam? Yes.
I object to the site plan approval extension. When they first came to us, they first came to us, I objected to the location of where the building of dormitory... That building of dormitory is about five feet away from their subdivision. And we had a lot of, a lot of talk about it, that they were going to hurt the values of that subdivision and the houses. And the people came forward complaining, and nothing seemed to happen. You voted for it, but I didn't. The dormitory does not belong in our location, so close to the subdivision. And you know what happens when the dormitory full of young people? And what they do, the crying and the noise and everything else will disturb that subdivision next door. So, I object that you had it on the... You extended it, and you're going to build it, and the whole subdivision will suffer from it. But then I understand that Lawrence Tech decided to have a contract to build it, and they will rent it from the contractor. That's just a way of evading the responsibility of it. But that thing should not be built there. It's too close to the subdivision, and I always object to it.
Is there any other councilperson has a comment?
Oh, I would like to clarify the question. Councilman Lance indicates he's going to rent it from the contractor. Actually, all that process, do you give concern?
Mr. Arizer from the university is here this evening. Dr. Barizer, if you'd come forward.
I'm Joseph Arizer, the university architect for Lawrence Tech. Couldn't hear your question, I'm sorry.
I'm actually piggybacking off of a concern of Councilman Lance in terms of that you're going to rent from the contractor. Could you clarify that, Mr. Lance, with your concern?
Yes.
Renting from the contractor, or... I can be clarification.
The company we're working with is experienced for designing and constructing university housing elsewhere. And we approached them, we negotiated two years ago. They specialize in housing. They used to do healthcare work. And it's simply a means by which you do financing. It's an alternative to coming up with capital dollars upfront at a land. And so what we do is the developer develops the property, we return leases from them. And then, at any point in time, or various point in time in the agreement, we have the right to buy out. And at the end of the term, and I don't recall what the length is, it's 25 or 30 years, if we don't do it in the interim, at the end of that period of time, we become the owner. And it's like financing your house, they're very comparable to that. It's through a developer instead of a land.
So eventually, you will, Lawrence Tech, will own the dormitory?
Ultimately, we will own it. We lease it to them with a technicality, like $1 for the land underneath the building type of thing. And then, we pay rent, which gives them a return on their investment. And then, say five years or 10 years, whatever we find appropriate, where it's financially the right thing to do, I'd say, we would then buy it out front. And in effect, we're exploring alternatives right now. We shouldn't buy it out right after they complete construction. But we just don't know that yet. We're working with our finance committee on that.
And this, I would point out, this is all explained a year ago, when we approved the site plan?
Well, two years ago, we first approved it.
When you first brought it forward?
Yeah.
Two years ago. Okay, just for that?
Yes, I have to answer that. Even though it happened two years ago, I had objections now. It doesn't matter whether Lawrence Tech owns it or not, their students are going to rent the place. If the dormitory is for them, what's the difference? Who owns it? It doesn't belong there. And that's the basic part of what the school did. You basically, they own it, that has nothing to do with the location of it and who owns the property. They will still have their students, do what they have to do to disturb the area and lower the value of the area as well. It's absolutely the wrong thing to do on the school part, too. But it's only...
I'm the only one objecting to it, though. Any other councilperson who's thinking?
I have a question. How close the school to the nearest home is being listed by other students?
I wasn't prepared to have a question, so I'll have to estimate it so fairly. I'd say there's three, four lots, plus it's across the street. Circle Drive is a pea-shaped street. So if you include generally a couple of lots over and then across, and there are two homes there in that whole pea-shaped section.
I'm thinking, facing you, the circular drive, dormitory is up here, and the houses across. But I'm thinking, either, you know, this way or this side, are they close enough to homes that they could be disturbing?
No. All of those homes along that side there, we own all of those, and there are leased others. And one of those gets torn down, is a part of the development. The other house is empty. So, the closest homes we have are across the other side of that street, in the P part. And that's several hundred feet away. I just don't know what the difference is.
That's the circular, are you talking about the...
The circular part, yes.
I recall the conversation from two years ago. The dormitory faces the university. It does not... There's not an entrance on Circle Drive. It's all facing towards the main campus.
Yes, I call it facing generally east, facing into the what we call C lot, which is that large parking lot on the campus. And we even agreed that, because of some of the concerns about the neighbors, about the traffic during construction, that we agreed that we would make sure that the contractor, the developer, his contractor, did all of the construction access and approach from our parking lot side, so as to not disturb the neighbors and the traffic in the subdivision.
All right, any other council and council? We have a motion on the floor, and I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, say goodbye by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Opposed.
All right, it is five to one. You have your exception. All right. We are now moving on to what was supposed to be a series of public hearings. Each of them has, as I mentioned at the beginning of the meeting, has been postponed at the request of the petitioner. So, we are going to make a motion to postpone, correct?
Correct. They have postponed this.
And what I need to get clear on, on the Jonah... They have asked the Jonah petitioner, or the requester of the Jonah company, they've asked for a postponement until October 21st.
They asked for a date certain October 21st?
Uh, no, I'm not sure about the Civic Plaza and Mr. Pro...
We're the chair. Also, Civic Plaza, I understand, has been asked to postpone to a date certain October 21st.
Okay.
We concur with those. And then, if you could deal with those, I'd like to talk about the motion made by Mr. Chair.
Okay. So I... Yes?
I'd like to address...
Would you make a motion?
Well, I'd like to make a comment first.
Oh, sure.
On the... I have the... As Jones Development that he does, was our 2023. I would like to see it extended to November, the year of November, or October to Thanksgiving. There's a lot of... This is something brand new for... I have a done residential with commercial. It's something... It is something quite new, and there are a lot of issues, as you know, there are quite a few requests for...
Variants.
Variants, that's right. So, I mean, we haven't really had a chance to give us a good, you know, going over. And I guess I think that that's the answer, I'm going to do the numbers, but...
Okay. I'm Mr. Lawson and Mr. Lam.
Well, it was my understanding, because we did have a lengthy study session on this, about less than a month ago, just about two weeks ago. Two weeks ago, we had a very in-depth study session on it. And it's made it through the planning commission process. It's my understanding that they wanted to break ground before this construction season's over. And I think that pushing it back any further would eliminate their ability to do that. And not to say that we don't have a role here, but we have a study session on it, we would have a public hearing on it, we'd have substantive debate on it. I'm comfortable to discuss it. I would... I'd be comfortable to discuss it tonight, but I'm okay with the petitioner's request to move it back another month. But another two months just pushes them back to the strike. I mean, this development just gets kicked out of the road for a whole other construction season. And, you know, we've been talking about this property for a year now.
Yeah, we've talked about this, too.
Mr. Lam is next.
But I want to address what Mr. Lee said.
Yes. Mr. Lam is next. We'll come back to you. Yes, please. All right.
I have 13 questions to ask.
Shouldn't I go and read to the part of the head?
Your papers covering your microphone.
Okay. I have 13 questions to ask about the... This development. Personally, I think it's wrong at this time, but I want answers to those questions. Another thing that I objected to, I'm chairman of the Site Plan Committee. That was supposed to be on the agenda two weeks ago, and it was taken off the agenda. Who took it off the agenda? I'm chairman, I wasn't notified. Did you take it off?
Um, I moved it to the whole study session because of the importance, the entire council. We thought, since this has been so much, so much discussion and public input is happening with this property, involving this property, that we would, rather than go to Site Plan Committee, we moved it to the entire council.
No, that's wrong. You had it on the agenda, you took it off.
We knew that from time to time, Mr. Lam. And this is one of those more controversial pieces of property, so it was our...
No, I... Oh, so... You were the one that took off?
I, as chair, I moved it to the whole council.
You were wrong. You were wrong. The last moment, the last moment, you came to the Site Plan and you took it off. Then asked me, did I...
Sir, there was no last moment. This was decided...
Well, I learned about it at the last moment. And if you had conceded that, you were wrong.
As a chair, he has the right to do that.
You were exerting your power. He didn't have the right to do it. I was still chairman of that board, and you should notify me.
Again, Mr. Lam, whoever sits in the seat of chair sets the agenda. And out of due consideration to the entire council and the sensitive nature of this particular project, which we have done repeatedly in the past, when we had... which we have, um, done repeatedly in the past, when we've had something that has been, uh, either very different, controversial, or sensitive, we've, we've had bypassed site plan and taken it to the full council. It didn't mean that anybody was cut out of the discussion.
But why did you do it when it was on the agenda? You did it because of your...
Well, I, I think I've explained why I did it. Uh, I can't keep repeating the same reason.
Well, I don't fire it.
With the interest of the entire council. I know you didn't...
You were exerting your power at that moment, and you were wrong.
Okay. Um, Ms. Jordan is, uh, is, uh, our, Ms. Seymour is next.
Just, I, just, I said a couple of things. Uh, first of all, Mr. Moss said that that should have been extensive study, that was really a blow from over. That was not an extent for me, like, any, it just was not. I mean, we didn't, there were a lot of things that we didn't know about all these variants that he used it. It was, it was a variant, and one house and then it started testing over. The other thing is, in terms of who set the agenda at council, it is, it is the chairman. But in terms of our own rules and the committee, it is the committee chairperson that sets the rule, and only if there's disagreement between, um, the, um, there has to be, there has to be, if there's a disagreement, it goes to the, uh, chair and the city ministries, such as the committee agendas are set by the chair, and that's council rules. And I don't blame anybody, because that is the council rule.
Ms. Jordan.
Yeah, um, I have to agree with Mr. Lance, because, since I've been on this council for the last twenty-one, fifteen years, the level process for any development is new to the state committee, and if there's a big development, they may, um, anticipate, um, questions from the, public, questions from the council. It may come to the whole council, but it still goes back to the site plan committee to make sure that all the processes have been identified, problems are resolved, um, that we really do a good workover on that project. Actually, you didn't own this project, was for the first time when it came to a council study a few weeks ago. So I just believe that it should go back after the postponement. It needs to go back to site plan to have this reviewed, and then come back to the whole council. My other concern is that, that we needed a few weeks ago, one of my issues that I spoke about itself was, we needed more of a buffer along council road, and what we had to be planned for this visiting, and our package, there's not been any change. And, uh, the, the developer clearly said, he heard our concern, and I wouldn't be the only one, but there's no change during the site that's been, been due, and I will take it to be all of that, come the review, but we still asked for a buffer along council road.
Mr. Chair.
But we're not going to debate this.
I, I just want to respond, that's one of the reasons they asked us to postpone, because they, they didn't have enough time to prepare the plans for the burning and everything, and they have acknowledged that that was an issue of concern. So they're trying to address some of the issues that came up two weeks ago, they weren't able to get everything ready for tonight, and that's one of the reasons they asked for a postponement.
Okay, all right. But I do believe we need to go to our site.
Well, I have no problem with it going to the back to the site plan committee. I just felt at the time, and, um, Ms. Jordan, I got to differ with you, uh, our planners from Don Gross to Mcganda, prior to Mr. Crowe, had brought projects to the full council, um, rather than to site plan committee. Um, well, okay. It's, um, we don't need to do like that. Mr. Moss is next.
The previous proposal on this particular lot didn't go to the site plan committee, came to the whole council. And I thought that that's kind of the exact same thing that we would take. This has obviously been a high-profile intersection, it's had a lot of community interest, um, and, you know, we try so hard to talk about Southfield being open for business, um, and, you know, you come to the city of Southfield, we're gonna, we're gonna really do our best to make sure, if you're a developer, you want to put taxpayer dollars back into our general fund by developing land, we're gonna be a partner with you on that. And now, I, I just, I don't agree with you sending back the site plan committee when we've already discussed it at full council. We're only adding on to the planning process, pushing it back to being approved after Thanksgiving, and then kicking it down the road, and it's, uh, church has, has been sitting abandoned for ten years, and, you know, you have some people who say, well, what's another couple of months? And I, I'm on the, I'm on the side of saying, let's go, let's go, let's talk about it, let's debate it. I felt it was substantive. I think, you know, other council members asked a lot of questions of them, um, and I felt like we got to a point where we were thankful that the development was coming off the heels of something that was so controversial that, 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 that we could, we could, uh, embrace as a community. Um, I'm comfortable with taking a vote on it. I can't imagine, we need two more meetings to bring before council to talk about it, yet at another meeting for a public hearing. Let's just bring it to October, um, and have that debate then? I don't know what more we have to talk about. Uh, I'm, I'm, I'm flabbergasted that we need to, we need to really have that much more conversation about this plot of land that we've been debating as a city council for the last year.
Mr. Lance?
Mr. Moss, you don't know the difference between good and bad. You are talking, trying to convince, convince people of your authority, you love it, you did it, but it's wrong. You, you don't have any, what's the difference between a development, whether it's good or bad? You're talking, and I, it's the greatest thing you ever did, you said it's the best, the best architect during this, it was, it was the most type of architect, okay? So, just think a little bit, Mr. Moss, think a little bit.
May I, may I respond to that? Um, Ms. Jordan, all right, then you make your comment.
I was just gonna say, when we, you said, first I didn't come for, that's why, oh, yeah, um, and who said, govern that, why it's not, it was impossible, especially, I believe that we, the picture of development, because it is in a fine, it was all on its own, we should have, I'm not talking for right here, we should make sure that we cover ourselves, make sure that everything lines up, to give, uh, to be there to our city, and to yourself itself, to make sure that we understand that.
Mr. Moss?
Yeah, I just would say, if you don't like the proposal, you don't have to vote for it. But I, I, I don't understand why delaying that vote does anybody any good in this area?
It's bad for the city, not for me. I don't care. It's bad for the city. You understand what I'm saying?
No.
And you understand that?
No.
Well, then it's not a story, you don't know nothing.
All right, great. I, I have no idea why we need to kick the can down the road on this.
All right, um, I'm gonna entertain a motion, um, that, I just like, oh, Mr. Frasier.
You know, there are rules, then there are also rules of common sense, and I think you, you, you used common sense when you brought the plan to the whole, to the whole committee, rather than send it to the site plan committee, where there's only three people out of the whole council. And Ms. Jordan just proved the case of why it should have come to the whole council, because we want to make sure that it's done right. And if you only get the view of three people that bring a recommendation to the council, you reduce the amount of exposure to asking questions during the, um, the public hearing. So, I applaud you for using common sense to bring the, the, the project to the whole council, so everyone could see that, um, and all the questions are answered, and that we get the best possible, um, project for this piece of property. This piece of property, the decision that we made on this piece of property is probably the most important decision that we will make this whole year.
Yes, you own the city.
And regardless of what one person says or another person says, we still take a vote, and after we ask all the questions, get as many answers as we can, everyone has their own preferences of what it ought to look like. So, the majority of the council takes a vote, and that's what the project is. So I applaud you for using common sense to bring it to the whole council.
Thanks, and Mr. Frasier, and I would just add that, uh, on January twenty eighth, this chamber was packed. Seventy-two people spoke that night. We haven't had that kind of a turnout for any, uh, piece of property in Southfield in decades. Um, yes, I was trying to be sensitive, actually, to my colleagues, and have everybody at the table, whether the, um, petitioner presented. Uh, if I'm guilty for that, then so be it, but, uh, to me, it's made the most sense to have everybody at the table that wants to hear the presenter, um, the petitioner, outline this project, and we did have a lot of questions, um, two weeks ago. So, um, with that, I'd like to, um, yeah, then, Mr. Crowe.
Are you going to make a little, uh...
Yeah, I'm gonna make a little...
Well, I just want to say that I, I understand what you, what, what you did in that meeting, I understand the purpose of it now, I didn't then, um, but I was surprised that the site plan was pulled. I think something like this should be looked at, and it has in the past, and before the council, so that everybody understood that it was something mutual, you know, it wasn't routine, and there were a lot of questions. Unfortunately, we didn't know that we were going to be nine-way versus questions. This, this is something we do, this is a very common, uh, corner, that I, I don't think that we're overdoing it by asking questions, because we want it to be a good development. I mean, I raised a lot of questions, and I, that he didn't answer, that, that is concerning, because it was a common thing in this corner, and I'm not gonna do that. But we all want it to be, whatever goes there, we want it to be successful, and that's what supports that it needs to suffer, and if there's any question, if anybody's monitoring, it might not be, but it was during, during the way, as, as someone here on council or not, a lot of questions need to be asked, the variants that we were not aware of, because a lot of this thing jams together, and it may not be, you know, ready for, to go ahead. So we, we still, we want to make sure that it's the best we can get, and that it not be something that later on we might, uh-uh, we weren't doing.
Yeah, President, one more show, just, Sherman's, okay. If this development goes to fruition, it's going to cost you, 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 all people, cost four million dollars of your taxes. Listen to me, all of my offers to pay for the lights, for the turnaround, and everything, Brownfields, they're not paying a penny. You are going to pay up to four million dollars for their development.
Mr. President, I don't know where you get that number from. Where you just ran me and how it goes.
What are you happy about? What do you know, Pam Gerald? What do you know?
All right, Mr. Lance. Um, Mr. Crowe definitely recognized. Thank you.
Just, just to help facilitate, um, I, I'm gonna ask that we group, if we could, council could group zoning, uh, ZR thirteen eighteen and SP thirteen oh five, which has to do with the ODB and, and the Civic, uh, Arbor Lots Phase Three, Civic Plaza Phase Three, if you could run a those as a group, and then we'll deal with Mr. Jonah's...
Okay, so we're going to put, um, a public hearing A and the site plan, uh, A in one motion. Uh, and, uh, Ms. Seymour, you gonna move that?
No, I don't.
Oh, okay. Uh, I'm looking for someone to move, um, postpone it.
Mr. President, I move that we postpone ZR thirteen eighteen rezoning request and site plan thirteen oh five site plan request, a review, a request, to a date certain October the twenty first, support.
Been moved by Mr. Frasier, supported by Mr. Moss, for further discussion. I'll now call a vote, uh, all of us in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
No. I would just request again that this still goes to the site plan committee, even if it's for some...
This one did go to the site plan. The, we just, we just postponed, it goes to the site plan. Uh, it was not controversial, uh, in the sense, it wasn't a, you call my own job, it wasn't like... Okay. Through the chair?
Yes, through the chair. The next, the next group of items that we could consider postponing, ZR thirteen nineteen, GP twelve sixty, and SP thirteen oh six, to a date certain on October twenty first.
Okay.
Mr. President?
Yeah.
I move that we postpone ZR thirteen nineteen, GP twelve sixty, and SP thirteen oh six to a date certain of October the twenty first, two thousand thirteen, support.
Been moved by, um, Mr. Frasier, supported by Mr. Moss, uh, this is a...
And I wanted to assure that that goes to, like, that thing.
I mean, full agreement, it can go to the site plan. Um, all of us in favor, say goodbye by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Not, okay, aye, but I, but I think it should be long, for a go-long, sir.
All right. Um, Mr. Lance, as chair of the site plan committee, and please call a meeting for the review of this project.
Um, excuse me, that's a certification, please. Was this a six oh or five, um, one for the first motion, for the overly desperate, after the center?
I counted, uh, six zero. On the first one, if you voted, uh, to support the, on the, on the first proponent, so, uh, for the Apple...
I think you voted, I think you voted no.
I had five one.
Oh. I think you voted no.
You were mixing me up between the others, calling numbers, and I see numbers here, which have no relation to what we were talking about. It's playing the numbers.
The first one, the Civic Plaza.
Okay, yes, I see, okay.
You, you're voting yes, on it.
Yes.
All right, so that would make it six oh, vote, postpone that.
Yes.
And the site plan to October twenty first. On your second postpone, that, how did you vote, Mr. Lance?
It was the same, the same people, the same petition?
No, it's, it's the Jonah company.
Thank you.
He said, he said in book, in the book, yes, he would like to extend it further, twenty five hours, so they have six oh on that as well.
Okay, yes, though.
And we have our final public hearing, GP twelve fifty-six, SP thirteen hundred, special use of site plan, new hope missionary Baptist Church. Now, the petitioner has postponed to a date certain of October twenty first. However, the planning department is concerned that there may be significant changes or revisions to the plan, and it should go back to the whole process. So our recommendation is to postpone to a date uncertain until we get rid of this plant, and then we can coordinate a public hearing if it can go forward, or if we need to go back through the process.
All right, so let me just further comment that, um, the petitioner for public hearing D, which was, um, GP twelve fifty-six, SP thirteen hundred, and this was, um, behalf of the New Hope Missionary Baptist Church, I know that there's been, uh, some comments in the community, uh, and letters written regarding, uh, this proposed, um, uh, special use in site plan, um, we are postponing that this evening at the request of the church. Uh, and I, uh, certainly would concur with Mr. Crowe that if, um, the church brings back something drastically or significantly, I mean, significantly different than what was proposed, then it needs to go back to the whole process, which would include the planning department, planning commission, site plan, and then full council. Correct? All right, so we need a motion then, uh, to postpone, GP twelve fifty-six, SP thirteen hundred, to a date uncertain. And it's been moved by Ms. Seymour, supported by Ms. Jordan, all of us in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Okay, so then that would bring us, um, uh, we have no site plan, so we have to move, so that would bring us to communication, and, um, the first on our agenda this evening is, and then Pamela Gerald.
Good evening, Mr. Penny.
And if you would give me one second?
Oh, yeah.
Gerald, uh, if you can catch up.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, and officially, I'm your new city attorney, attorney for Rikowski.
All right, you may start.
Okay. Pamela Gerald, PO Box one fifty-five, Southfield, Michigan, four eight zero three seven dash zero one five five. My telephone number is two... My telephone number is two fourteen, three four six, zero four, three nine. I'm not going to talk about public safety, because residents know that we're very passionate about public safety. I want to talk about some things that we have discussed in the past. We talked about putting together an economic development committee that would consist of some of the residents, mainly to talk about that twelve mile Southfield location in the State Beach Church. So I want to know, has that committee been put together? Did you select some residents? And what about an update or status about what's going on in that committee, and how involved the residents are? The second thing that was discussed, and I brought this up at the COW, was having businesses along the Telegraph corridor to adopt a median. We are always constantly comparing Southfield to Bloomfield, to Fern, to Hill, and other areas. Well, the landscaping is real pretty along Telegraph down in Bloomfield, but has anyone from community relations, or administration, or council talked to the businesses about adopting that little section of the road? To make it pretty with landscaping, for them to be able to put their signage out there today, flowers dedicated by landscaping dedicated by, I think it would really enhance Telegraph from twelve and a half mile to eight mile. It would look good, and it would make the corridor would look like the city is coming alive. So remember, we are supposed to be thinking innovative and very creative. The third thing, I want to remind the city and council that we have a Black Southfield Chamber of Commerce. Every time I hear talk about the Chamber of Commerce, it is just the Southfield Chamber. You don't hear about some of the other ethnic chambers that exist. More importantly, you don't hear about the Black Southfield Chamber. Now, it's been members of this council that came and spoke about what, and I was there, I'm not really sure, because a lot of you do these speaking engagements, you talk a good game, but you don't do follow-up. And that's where we seem to miss the vote. All of the elected officials talk about the problem, and you identify the solution. It seems like you have trouble implementing the solution to the problem. So this needs to be brought up. There is a Black Southfield Chamber of Commerce, they need to be given some kind of presentation or proclamation, and then we have other ethnic group chambers of commerce. So I want you to get them to the table with all of this economic development and talk that you're doing in the city. And the last thing I wanted to bring up is, residents feel that there's always new development around City Hall and in that new center area, and I'm looking on the agenda, there's new development near that city center area. Now, what's being done to market the eight mile corridor, north of eight mile? What's being done for Northland? What's being done for the nine mile area? What's being done for eleven mile near Greenfield? You guys have got to, like Mr. Gibbs said in that planning session, you guys have got to attract businesses that just want to be in Southfield, not all of the prime locations, and tell them where you want these businesses, not act we as to where they want the businesses, and especially the desert business area. And thank you, Mr. President, for the opportunity to speak before council.
Mr. Chairman, may I ask Pam Gerald a question?
I'm not entertaining any questions tonight. Send me an email.
Well, I'll tell you.
Send me an email.
I understand you don't live in Southfield anymore.
Send me an email.
Why are you so concerned with what Southfield does?
Send me an email. Would you like my email?
Your PO Box office doesn't mean you live in Southfield anymore.
We're not...
My email is questions@whatmatters2pam.com, if you'd like to send me an email for any questions that you may have. Thank you.
You don't deserve any answer or any question outside of City Hall.
Thank you.
You don't deserve it.
Thank you.
Go back to Farmington Hills where you live.
Thank you.
Mr. Muller, same. Please, can we move on?
Thank you.
I did want to mention, normally I don't comment on speakers' remarks, but just for the listening audience, we are very distressed about how the Telegraph median looks. We had a promise from the Michigan Department of Transportation that they would restore, after the road construction, that they would restore the median to the condition it was in before the road construction began. They have failed their promise. They didn't use the topsoil out there, they destroyed our irrigation system, and we have a plan to fix that. We are holding them accountable. Something is supposed to take place in two thousand, spring of two thousand and fourteen. The businesses on twelve mile do contribute to a special assumption for the upkeep of the median. And we welcome any group to come and present. Tonight, to the Southfield Chamber, but certainly the Austin Chamber of Commerce, the Aldean, the Black Chamber of Commerce, may have an event, they'd like to share it, council, they most certainly can. So with that, I'm going to move on to Mr. Muller, who has to be recognized this evening.
Good evening, sir. Good evening, Dr. Cyrus. Mr. President, my name is Gerard Muller, AKA White Nice. My address is Post Office Box one fifty-five, Southfield, Michigan, four eight zero three seven. Located in the city, in the city of Seigal, Gerald. Just one small compliment from that miracle on Southfield Road, where it could flourish. Tonight, I am not here to talk about the nice guys from Walmart, the planning commission's favorite corporate criminal. Instead, I'm here tonight to make the following suggestion to council. That's your votes. In order to encourage greater citizens' participation in Southfield City Government, I propose that council award annual prize to the person who makes the most provocative presentation at a council meeting during the public hearing portion of the conference. The prize, prize be that the winner will have their picture, a full-page photo of the chairman of Southfield City Council, reenacting their award-winning performance before council. This photo will be placed above one of the months that would otherwise be reserved for Carver Delight, that costly park across the street from Farmington Hills. We're all sick and tired of Carver Delight, I know I am. For example, in last year's calendar home, there were four, how come four? As my Polish friends from Hamtramck, the Lake Village of Detroit, Lucetti, Yade, De Ma, Satrie, Satrie. That's right, four full-page photos of Mount of the Bay, Carver Delight, also known as Denzel Park. On another note, this day in history is known for the two most famous political campaign speeches ever given in the history of this republic. Richard Nixon in nineteen thirty-two, or his Chekhar speech. And FDR in nineteen forty-four, or his Paul speech. Both speeches were made for each candidate's respective pet dog. The Nixon speech was seen by sixty billion TV viewers, the largest television audience ever up to that day. The FDR speech was, of course, heard only on radio, but was recorded on film. The video of each speech is widely available on the internet. The Chekhar speech was Richard Nixon's finest moment on the political stage, a true masterpiece of record. The future thirty-seven president of the United States, with great clarity and emotion, defended a questionable gift that he'd received, a little black and white Dr. Spaniel named Chekhar's. The Paul speech was FDR mocking the Republican claim that he had sent a US Navy destroyer, the fact she was little, Scottish carrier, named Paul, who supposedly was left behind in the illusion islands. FDR said that he didn't mind the Republican criticism, but followed it. Oh, and one last thing, Mr. President, which agrees in form the President pro tip, that is councilroom majority, that a residence is still parked illegally in front of City Hall. I don't appreciate it, every law-abiding citizen doesn't appreciate it. The police department doesn't appreciate it, and most of all, the fire department doesn't appreciate it. We're all now less safe due to the reckless and illegal behavior. This is, again, just another example, another sorry example, of your brain dead council in action. Another sad tale in the continuing saga of a damned seven that just can't shoot straight or bark straight. Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Muller. Next, we have Ms. Geraldine Amato.
Good evening, Ms. Amato.
Good evening, my name is Geraldine Amato. I come here particularly to try to share with you what I had learned during the last twenty years of my life, which I should have been taught and had learned the first twenty years of my life. We are not under lawful order, we are under a private commercial jurisdiction, and everything we do today to earn a living is not for ourselves, it's for those who own us and own the resources of this nation by many acts of treachery. Recently, in the news have been several free ring services, three of them obscuring the major one from last year about Congress shutting down. That's a preview of what is planned, whether Congress and those guys up in the federal government plan to do it this year or not, or with rings they see, but they will do it one of these years, and many people are going to be in serious trouble when they do. We have one service, free ring service regarding Obamacare, another one regarding the Syrian chemical weapons, et cetera, and shooter mops and gun control. In this arbitrary limited time limit here, I wanted to talk regarding the double talk of chemical weapons being used against people's own people. Damasio Lopez of New Mexico, who had studied nuclear matters, went to the Iraq Theater in Desert Storm, believing what the mouthpieces of the establishment told him, that there was no real significance depleted uranium or live plutonium in that area. And in a side paper in Albuquerque, New Mexico, they showed Damasio Lopez, a professor at one of the universities in New Mexico, all geared up in his protective gear. After he got there, he noted that it was hot with depleted uranium and even some live plutonium. And that newspaper that did that one article on his report, after him going over to the Desert Storm Theater, our own people, our own troops, et cetera, that paper disappeared and there were no follow-up articles or reports anyways. If we do recall, it happened in nineteen forty-five, three detonations of nuclear bombs against innocent folks. But the first one was detonated in New Mexico at the Trinity Site, they call it, and they're playing with the word Trinity. And if you ask them why they named it the Trinity Site, they lie and tell you the bogus explanation. They apparently planned three bombs, each under the thirty-third degree northern latitude of the globe, and two of those on two Japanese cities with noncombatants, innocent men, women, and children, to use their terminology about the Syrian thing. And it's never mentioned that it war crime. And in fact, the people in charge of the federal government orchestrated that, and was driven with the thirty-third president. These numbers reflect the thirty-third degrees of the Scottish Rite prayer masons, which is erroneously called Freemasons. They're brother masons, but they're not free. They're engaged in an organization that traps them, lies to them, and oppresses them, and threatens them if they dare get out of line and reveal the secrets of the society. That's who is in control. Those are the type of people in control of the highest level of government in this country, every court in this nation, and every jurisdiction and every bureaucracy, both public and private. We've just suffered into the New World Order and the global economy, and we are suffering the consequences of it. We can keep playing footsie with these people and doing their bidding at these meetings and elsewhere with what resources we still have in possession and still have them for toll of, but if we don't start resisting their agenda, we will find ourselves in serious straits, the genocide of other places orchestrated by these people with lies in the press and a propaganda machine. So you get a couple of seconds, and cut me off in mid-word if I don't finish. We are in serious trouble, a ship of states is under treacherous force, and if there's not enough good people with the courage and the will to resist what's going on in this nation, we will leave a legacy of disaster for the next generation.
Thank you, your time is up.
You're ahead on the block too, Mr. Tyler.
Okay, next, Mr. Killian. Good evening. His name in the contract.
My name is Charles Killian. I'm a precinct delegate, I'm certified with this city, I'm being certified, I'm a precinct delegate, I'm in the state, ten years, two years. And if I had to give my dress, the city is, do I have to tell my dress? My home address?
I can give it to the class.
Okay. I love my city council, I love this thing, this city, it's a man's script, the new lawyer, and I hope you pick those contracts up and look at them. And I'm married. Your mayor, the name one, got to be a resident here about fourteen years ago, I was in about thirty, forty miles from East Raceway here to relocate. But I heard on the news one day, Curly Pearson, Southfield, and she was talking about, you just, like you got ideas, you're cursing to everybody, you don't grow up on nobody, I don't know how you got the taste to be about, but I've been checking out my mayor, I have never seen her grow up on anybody. I can't take it that she can. And, but I like her curvy, you know, that's all she's got, she wants Southfield with the curvy, you know, my, that's no, no doubt. I came here to talk about something else tonight, but I could hold out the twenty-first of next month, but I would like to bring up something that period of this week that is scratching me, that's the big giant city below us, we don't beat them. But you have streets, you have Southfield, you have police officers, the city, well, the city, but below us, you have fire people, Dallas people, well, straps, what they're facing is what they're going to do, which I hope they're going to do, going to cut their pensions, they're going to cut, going to cut their healthcare, make them pay more. What I'm trying to say, you be careful up there what y'all do here, be giant, because these houses, I'm afraid of some of these people here, and if that house is in there, that's four, five thousand dollars a year, that it just be sitting there, we waiting for somebody to pick up maybe twenty, thirty years, so I've got a no-freezing tax on, but we need the money now. So y'all, y'all be careful making the contracts up here, my lawyer, read everything. I'm not going to take my full time, because I've been looking at your agenda. Thank you, thank what you just let me talk, but that's why I'm really here, the no-freezing speech here. I was amazed, I said, this is where I want to be, because I, see, I couldn't, I tell everybody. Thank you.
You're welcome, Mr. Killian. You're welcome, Mr. William. I assume you're referring to the Detroit situation, and you can take comfort in the fact that pension system in Southfield is sound, we have a balanced budget, we have some money in the bank, and we've done this without laying anybody off here. Um, and I would credit this to a plan that our city administrator came up with in two thousand and four, when he told the council that your expenditures are going like this and your revenues are going like this, they're looking kind of flat. And so we went on a fiscal diet in two thousand and four, and it's been very fortuitous, because in two thousand and four, we had no idea what was going to hit us in two thousand and eight and nine when property values are wrong. And so it's been the political will of this council and the mayor to keep this city in the black and operating with the challenge of having greatly reduced revenues, but we have done it. And I think we're all proud of that fact. And our, I think I can speak for everybody at the council table that we will continue to do that, um, as, um, we don't want to find ourselves in a position where someone's coming here to take over us. All right, with that, we move on to council items. Um, Mr. Moss.
All right, I just have two items to bring to council. One was a question that was posed at our meeting, what became of the Economic Development Committee, I can provide an update. After the vote in January about the property, I think the council president appointed an ad hoc committee, uh, which consists of myself as chairman, but also consists of two other council members, that's Council President Lieutenant Jordan and Councilman Spocky. We rounded out the rest of the committee with our staff, three members of our staff, including our city planner, our business development director, and our deputy city administrator. Three developers that we identified had a vested interest in making sure that Southfield remained vibrant, and we made three resident appointments. And it came from council president, we only were required to make one, but we wanted to really add a wide array of voices on the committee. And we've also rounded it out with our city president and representative from L T U. The reason we added L T U to the discussion is because from our visioning session that we had earlier this year, that the council's top priority that we said we wanted to focus on, as a full council, were both the city center and city marketing. And Lawrence Tech is obviously married into the city center, so that's been our task, really talk about taking the city center vision, the council, bless you, all members of the council, bless you again. So it's a priority, um, and, and go on a backfiring mission about how we can really bring the city forward and, um, create kind of a sense of place and a vibrancy towards the city center area. So that's been our mission, we've met regularly over the past several months, have another meeting coming up, but if you want to give an update as to what's up, that's a fair point.
And can I say, Mr. Moss?
Yes.
We did interview candidates, including residents, for the committee, and the individuals, the residents, the executives.
Absolutely.
At ninety-six dollars a man and at the committee.
Yes.
We did interview some of these candidates.
Absolutely.
That was resident.
The conversation's been engaging, and it's actually been, you know, eye-opening about some of the things that we've talked about in terms of really moving the community forward. One of the things in the city center, so this is moving on to my next point, that's taking place, was featured on the front page of the Southfields Sun this past week, and I wanted to talk about that for a little bit. I was recently in Kalamazoo, I'm taking a class through MSU, and class goes around the state, and we were in Kalamazoo for this weekend. And every Friday in Kalamazoo over the summer, similar to what we do with Eat to the Beat, they have, their main park centrally located in the city, they have food trucks and live music every Friday, and the workers and the community residents come out, and it was just a vibrant atmosphere and very exciting. So I brought that back from Kalamazoo, actually talked about it with some members of our Economic Development Committee, in particular Shelley Freeman, and Shelley said, you know what, we have something brewing that we want, that we are planning to do similarly in Southfield. It's kind of piggybacking off of the success of the Eat to the Beat series, the last, so in Southfield on Thursday at lunch, we do something similar, and the last summer Thursday where we did Eat to the Beat was last week, and we had two of the food trucks out. And so the coverage is in the Southfield Sun, Council President Tyber and I were there, and actually we got city administrator Charette out, out from City Hall to come and enjoy the music and the food truck.
And librarian.
And our city librarian was also there, and other city staff. And it was exciting, it was a vibrant atmosphere, and it was lots of fun, and we are trying to replicate that and really create that momentum going. So, uh, we've been pushing this event where we're gonna have a food truck rally, the first annual, and I hope it's even more than annual after this, but the first annual Southfield Food Truck Rally is gonna be held September twenty-fifth, that's this Wednesday, so in two days from now, from four to nine P M. There's seven food trucks out, we have live music, really trying to capture that after-work crowd, thousands of workers that live in Southfield, but at five o'clock, they pick up and they drive home and they leave the city. We're trying to keep that substantive potential taxpayers coming into Southfield and remaining, but we also want our residents to come out and enjoy what the Southfield, the city of Southfield is sponsoring. So please come out, it's gonna be on the corner of Civic Center Drive and Central Park Boulevard. It's an outdoor, exciting kind of festival fair where we're gonna have live music and food trucks. And Councilman Fraser and I were just at the Michigan Municipal League Conference in Detroit, and many of those same food trucks provided lunch to the delegates from all the cities, and it was just a vibrant atmosphere. And if we replicate that, we can really get something exciting, interesting, bringing people into Southfield after five o'clock. We have such a huge disparity between our daytime population and the actual residents who live here, and I think this is a step to be able to merge those two together and really create a sense of vibrancy back in Southfield. So again, that's Wednesday from four to nine, right along Central Park Boulevard and Civic Center Drive, right where the Arbola complex has been redeveloped.
Thank you, Mr. Moss. Mr. Fraser?
Yeah, I'd just like to add on to, uh, one of the things that Mr. Moss talked about, that was the Michigan Municipal League Conference in Detroit, and for a while, they did have the food trucks there, they had, I think they had four different food trucks there. And the only complaint that I heard of everyone that I talked with was they ate too much. It's, uh, they were, they were kind of hoping that the portions would have been a little smaller, so they could have eaten from every food truck to taste all the different, different food trucks. But, uh, it was a, it was an interesting and repeatable kind of an event, so I'm looking forward to the food trucks being here. But I do have another thing that I picked up at the Michigan Municipal League, and we spent a fair amount of time talking about the property at the corner of Southfield Twelve Mile tonight and Big Box versus mixed use. And I attended the session at the conference that talked about that. And it just so happens that there's data that they've looked at over a period of time that mixed use brings in almost ten times as much tax revenue as Big Box. So, uh, Big Box looks impressive, but the real tax base is mixed use. So, uh, there was quite a long presentation on that, and that was the one piece of it. So I just wanted to share that with everyone, that sometimes it is different in the cities.
All right, Mr. Len.
Yeah, I reply in reference to mixed use. Mixed use in this development that allegedly is what happened here, the mixed use is cash, cash lending stores, uh, kebab stores, uh, salons, every type of fast food. And you say that mixed use brings in more taxes than a tremendous four billion dollar company? It doesn't make sense. The little, the little businesses, half of them don't pay taxes, they get everything in cash and they keep it, no taxes are paid. Uh, but I don't, I don't see how the data shows that little business pays more than the big business.
The only thing I can say is, you may be right, but I was only talking to the professionals.
What makes them right? Because they have a professional degree or something? They have, they have.
No, because that's what they do for a living.
They have no common sense either, some way.
That's what they do for a living.
I know.
I don't know, that's what the professionals say.
And this, and this is, Amato is correct, they're the ones who voice us around, take our living away.
Thank you, that's all, that's all you have.
And then we have, um, a rash of Big Box who's killing their tax, our tax.
We have an ordinance against the cash lending, things are popping up, so that's not gonna be in.
Well, that developer owns one, he owns one, he's gonna have it.
Um, if there's nothing else from council, then I would just like to make one more announcement. Um, I want to bring to, or invite the community to attend our second mid-century modern Southfield Architecture Tour. This will take place on Sunday, October sixth, from two P M. to four thirty P M. We have a treasure trove of buildings that were built in the fifties and sixties when Southfield was the fastest growing city in the state of Michigan. And, uh, we, the tour will feature three neighborhoods, Northland Gardens, Washington Heights, and Cranbrook, as well as buildings on the northwestern corridor, northwestern highway corridor, Northland. And this tour is a little bit different in that we are, we will be touring the inside of Charitatic Synagogue, as well as Northland Theater, and, um, the, one of the, probably the most prestigious buildings in Southfield is the Yamata, a minority of Yamataki's Reynolds Aluminum Building at Northland Drive and, um, you know, like, from pilot. The tour will go in, besides being driven by motor coach, will also go into those three facilities. And the cost is twenty dollars for the coaching program, as well as a check that's payable to the Southfield Historical Society. Tickets are available in the lobby of the Civic Center. And again, that's Sunday, October sixth. With that, I think we'll move on to the mayor.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I am moved that we approved the expense account for the mayor to attend the Medical Mail Explorer ferry visit to Jackson, Mississippi.
Okay. It's been moved by Mr. Fraser, supported by Ms. Jordan, all in favor?
Aye. I stand corrected, it's called mail.
Okay, Madam Mayor, I know you have a number of things to talk about.
Yes. Today, we had a visit by the president of Albania into the city of Southfield. It was quite the event, to see all the security of a president from another country. As we know, we have an Albanian church in our community, and, um, he visited, because Albania has Christian and Muslims, so he visited Dearborn, the Muslim Center, he visited Rochester Hills, Sermon Heights, and Southfield Community Church. And it was, uh, really such a passionate event, because the community was so excited to see the president from their home country. And, um, so it was an honor, and the Secret Service was very complimentary of our police who had to be engaged in this, so it was, it was quite an honor, spoke very, very timely of Southfield. Also, we had, I was invited to the opening of Bloomberg Detroit News Bureau. As you know, they've been in Southfield for a number of years, but they were in Charter One Building, and they moved to the town center, and they had their opening, and they had quite the panel for their opening. Uh, they had the president of, I'm sorry, the, the chief financial officer there from GM, the president of Delphi, they had the president of Online News, and others, and they had a panel, and it was quite impressive, a lot of talk about finances, but they were so happy. When we go into the second floor, they actually have all glass, so they liked the fact that it's open and it looks like an open, um, area. So, um, you know, they're happy to be here, and this is quite impressive, that we have Bloomberg Detroit News Bureau, and they stayed in Southfield, that's what I was so happy about, they, they needed to move, but they chose to stay in Southfield, that's why they were so happy. Council before you is a draft of a council going to be. Many of you know that October is Breast Cancer Awareness Month, and Prominent Hospital and the Cancer Foundation came and asked if their department was to sit in Southfield. And our Fire Department, Doug Nelson, said they were going to wear pink t-shirts the month of, the month of October. And, um, I was really impressed with that, and we talked about, we talked about how the city could get involved in breast cancer awareness, and so the ideal of a pink door campaign came along. And so there's many people who are survivors, thank God, but there's also those who have loved ones who lost their battles to cancer. And so I started approaching the businesses, if they would decorate their door in pink. And Loes, that they would paint the doors pink and spin it outside and put the bow on it, so people could have it. Home Depot says they would, I'm sorry, Loes, says that they would decorate their doors. D S W is gonna decorate their doors. Prominent Hospital is decorating their doors. I went today to Michael, and Michael is gonna make a whole display of pink wreaths and pink bows. The owners of McAllen said that they would put the pink bows on their, on their outdoors. And this is, um, it has got such energy going, Prominent Hospital is very excited about it. And for us as a city to create awareness, and everyone has the pink doors, this is they will have sometime a display that will have material, a map around, and, um, what you should look for and how you should self-examine. And so it's an exciting thing, doesn't cost any money, but I have a request of the council. The week of thirteen, I would like to, to be to participate, and allow me to decorate our door pink, the front door. I've talked to, um, to, uh, Michael, and they said they will partner with us, we have some very creative people here. I personally would decorate my office with a marriage of pink. In addition to that, I'm asking if you would wear a pink tie, a pink shirt, at the council meeting for the week of the thirteen, to be in support of awareness, if you'd like, I can get pink shirts, so all of the, with the logo on it. So we're asking that for that meeting, that if you would come with, um, a prominent pink, um, teeth of clove, and just to create awareness here at our meeting. Prominent is gonna talk a lot about the woolen, those, so, um, council, any comments, would you be in favor of decorating our front door, because Mr. Charette needs permission to do that.
Well, so, council, you want to move?
Yeah, I would absolutely move to support the mayor's project in moving forward in decorating the city hall areas, the city hall, including our front door, pink for the week of October thirteen through eighteen.
Support?
Support by Mr. Fraser.
I'm supportive, I've been on council, on carmados board of directors for a number of years, so, yes, I will gladly support it.
Thank you.
All right. We have a motion to decorate the front door pink. Um, all of us in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We'll make sure, we'll make sure it happens.
We have the mayor to create a people.
Um, and Ms. Banks, uh, for the record, that's a five dollar vote. Um, Ms. Jordan was in town, so she left it in, um, eight forty-five.
Thank you.
For the record. Um, okay, um, Mayor, anything else?
So, we need to take the day, the seventh of the twenty-fourth, uh, twenty-first, our council meeting, um, the whole month is breast cancer awareness, so.
Tell them to make it the twenty-third.
Yeah.
Glad we did the twenty-third.
Okay. Want to wear pink?
Yeah, yeah. And, um, but we'll do the door and keep it pink until we have our meeting.
Okay.
All right.
And so, to the listening public, um, what we're saying is individual homes, um, in memory and celebration of those beloved that, um, died from, um, breast cancer, and also to celebrate the lives of those who, who are survivors. We encourage, Channel Two has, uh, said they will decorate their doors pink, and they're going to be our, we're going to, so we're going to be going through the city showing the pink doors.
And we don't have to paint them pink.
No, decorate green, no, put green, put rose.
That could be a little messy, but, um, you can certainly drape them in pink fabric or, um-
You can fabric, and sometimes, like, I'm doing a holiday, people put four, pink paper on the door.
Yeah, exactly.
You don't have to paint them.
You can add your credit points to it.
Everybody knows someone who's had some form of cancer, they have relatives, and we all do. So, I think it really should be, you know, brought, not just, even though it, it, it focuses in one way, everybody makes a difference, everybody does a thing of life, and one will live themselves.
Okay, um, moving on to the administration, um, Mr. Sharet, I know you have to tell the like.
Yes, uh, to the chair, under I M A., we are pleased, and pleased to introduce a collaborative business development initiative involving the city of Southfield, the city's Downtown Development Authority, the University of Michigan, and the Michigan Economic Development Authority. Uh, under this arrangement, Peter Allen, an adjunct lecturer in real estate, and his University of Michigan graduate students, will provide highly specialized and sophisticated technical assistance on a volunteer basis, aiding the city's continuous tax-based preservation and growth efforts. This innovative project will involve a comprehensive visioning and property analysis model centered around a specific, underutilized commercial property in the city of Southfield, the North Park Plaza, located at seventeen, one seventeen West Nine Mile Road, within the city's Downtown Development Authority District, and adjacent to the former Ramadi Inn property, currently under demolition and site beautification, making way for progress. This collaborative business development initiative has the potential to offer many insights that can contribute to the enhancement of the city's commercial tax base. Consequently, we are requesting council endorsement of the project, and approval for the mayor and city clerk to sign any required documents to facilitate the project. I would like to, if I could, uh, ask, uh, Mr. Fred Zorn, who has up our tax-based, uh, business relation program, uh, to say a couple of words about this proposed project.
Thank you, Mr. Sharet, um, Mr. President and Mayor, uh, the whole council. This is a, a pretty exciting opportunity for the city, as we continue our economic development initiatives within the community. This, um, program, um, is a collaborative effort with a number of entities, Michigan County Development Corporation, the city of Southfield, our Development Authority, a private business owner, the owner of the building on Nine Mile, uh, and as well as our Business Development Center. In two thousand and six, the city of Southfield was one of the first communities approved to then the Michigan Suburbs Alliance Redevelopment Ready Program. In the last twelve months, the redevelopment ready program was sold to the state of Michigan. The state of Michigan is now adding up that, that initiative. One of the strengths the Michigan Economic Development Corporation brings to the redevelopment concept is this concept of doing intense market analysis of different properties. And in, uh, the next, uh, few weeks, I'll share with you some of the reports that have been prepared on other properties. The Suburbs Alliance to the Redevelopment Ready in two thousand and eight did a pilot program with ten, um, communities within the state where this type of analysis was done by the University of Michigan. This is thousands of dollars worth of analysis done on the property, to identify how the property can best be, uh, repositioned for where today's market is, what economic development tools can be used to make this project, not just those tools that are available to us at the federal level, but what tax incentives may exist at the federal level, uh, as, as well. I think what most intrigued me is who's involved with this, and that is Dr. Peter Allen. A lot of you may be aware of his name in the real estate area. Annually, the University of Michigan, for years, has put on the Urban Land Institute's, uh, real estate forum. Peter Allen has been a leader in making that happen. Each year, the graduate students at the University of Michigan focus on certain areas within the state of Michigan. So, we're really fortunate to have them looking at a Southfield property. Staff is open, that just opens up other opportunities to show other economic and good business development opportunities that are available for the business community to take advantage of within the city of Southfield. So, we're very excited about this, we hope that the council will authorize this action.
All right, okay, any discussion, or, or, actually, I'll entertain a motion, because the administration is looking for endorsement of this collaborative, um, initiative.
Support?
Moved by Ms. Timor, supported by Mr. Moss, all of us in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carried.
I would like to say, Mr. President, that this property is located in the D B H, and that, that is an area that having this type of resource is an enhancement for that area. We have our directors, and so here, I wanted to know, because, because I was the question, what are we doing in the D B H area? So, this is quite, um, a compliment to the goal and the objective of the community. Thank you.
The chair might add, uh, that Mr. Seaver's very, uh, helpful in helping me understand this, and, uh, to, uh, provide the communication, um, so I do appreciate that.
All right, Mr. Sharet, are there any other things?
Yes, under I M P., I'm very pleased to present especially light of comments made by the council president relative to our budgeting and the financial, uh, structure, as well as Mr. Gilliam's, uh, comment, uh, with regard to, uh, constant vigilance to, to stay on, and the positive on our financial structure. Uh, we have a name change, uh, that was discussed September ninth for our, uh, emergency management, uh, function. Uh, due to the terminology that, uh, is used now for, uh, distressed situations, uh, we had discussion of, of better terminology, uh, as, as well as some changes on the federal level to the nomenclature that is used under Homeland Security. So, uh, the council, uh, mayor's discussion, right, that it consists, uh, that we will call the division, the Homeland Security and Emergency Preparedness Division, which is a, an excellent combination of words, because that's exactly what they do. And the director of this division is in the audience, if we have any questions, Mr. Phil Johns. Uh, it will be, uh, renamed as the Homeland Security and Emergency Preparedness Director. Uh, this would be through a, an ordinance change. If there are any questions in that regard, uh, the city attorney will be glad to, to assist, uh, with any procedural questions. Uh, but we should be ready to go on this, because it was reviewed at the September ninth committee hall. Thank you.
Um, I'll entertain a motion, uh, to, uh, make this, uh, change entitled-
It's been moved, support?
It's been moved by Mr. Moss, and supported by Mr. Fraser, to change our still dependent, uh, emergency management to, um, of the, uh, Homeland Security and Emergency Preparedness. Um, and that's a minor change, doesn't really change the function at all, um, but it makes it clear that we're not under emergency management. Um, any other discussions? Hearing none, uh, then, uh, call for vote, all of us in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion carries.
I move, uh, Mr. President.
We need it in that.
I move that we, uh, introduce ordinance number, yeah, sixteen, sixteen.
Sixteen fifteen.
I was going to say fifteen.
Um, all of us in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, all right. Now, I know you have one more thing, um, Mr. Sharet.
Yes, uh, um, the city librarian is with us this evening. We have an opportunity, it's very exciting for the library and for the city in terms of our, uh, historical perspective and our, our continuous, uh, commitment to show, uh, our, uh, support for treating all people with dignity in this city. Uh, the authorization for the library to submit an application to the Smithsonian Institute and the American Library Association for an exhibit entitled Changing America, the Emancipation Proclamation, eighteen sixty-three, and the March on Washington, nineteen sixty-three, and to apply for a grant to provide for programs related to the exhibit. Uh, what we are asking for, and will, uh, if it is not already, will be on the, uh, screen for folks during, uh, the, the cable cast, is, uh, letters of support, uh, to, uh, Ms. Kelly Rembert, directed to Ms. Kelly Rembert, Southfield Public Library, uh, twenty-six thousand three hundred Evergreen Road, Southfield four eight oh seven six, or we have an email address, uh, that also shows, uh, it's krembert@southfieldlibrary.org. Uh, we have a librarian here, if you would like to say a few words, this is an exciting opportunity, it's highly competitive, and so the letters of support are definitely encouraged.
Good evening, Mr. Ebert. Good evening, thank you for this, uh, opportunity. We, um, we, we have ra- reasonable hope that if Detroit doesn't apply to this, we might get it, but, uh, generally speaking, uh, grants like this do go to larger entities in the area. I have already received two letters of, of, of support, one from the Southfield Public Schools, Dr. Juan Andrew Robinson, and another one from, um, the University of Michigan, William Collins, I always want to say Conlin, I know I was wrong, William Collins, so I received two. I wanted to let you know a little bit about this. Included in this, in this display, this would happen, this is coming from the National Museum of African American History and Culture, which was established by the Smithsonian as an act of Congress in, in two thousand and three, excuse me. It is the only national museum devoted exclusively to the documentation of African American life, art, history, and culture. This exhibit will come in two thousand and fourteen, and it will be going to fifty sites only throughout the state. It includes Nat Turner's Bible, the inkstand that was used by President Abraham Lincoln in eighteen sixty-two to draft the document giving freedom to the slaves of the South, which later became known as the Emancipation Proclamation. Um, it includes a rare copy of the Thirteenth Amendment to abolish slavery, including, uh, Abraham Lincoln's signature, and includes items that were used in the slave trade and resistance, including a whip, a runaway slave poster, a Bible, oh, I said that was belonging to Nat Turner, uh, roulette in eighteen thirty-one slavery valley in Virginia, a lace handkerchief in color owned by Gary Tubman. If you can see that, the guitar that was played by singer Joe Baez at the nineteen sixty-three March on Washington, this is, this is an amazing thing, and, and we, uh, we really do think we have a shot at it, and so we, we wanted to, to let you all know that we're trying for this. This would also include seventeen hundred dollars to bring programs, speakers, et cetera. And I have to, I have to thank Kelly Rembert, who is our outreach librarian, for first of all discovering this, and second of all getting me pumped up for it. We have already worked with Oakland University Associate Professor David Sykes Junior, who would be, uh, working with us, give us at least one program, and then help us find other programs that would go with this. We could actually do the programs, even, but, uh, but it would be so much more exciting to have all these wonderful artifacts from our, our nation's history and, and such a powerful time for our community.
All right, um, I think you sold us, so we have a motion, uh, Mr. Fraser.
Yeah, just a question.
Yes.
Do you think the general recognition is going to be, uh, challenging for this too?
I think because this is through the, um, American Libraries Association, it's going to libraries only, but I may be wrong, because that's, that's the way I understand it. I, I looked at the, the various areas of the, um, of the, the websites that, that are listed, and, and it seems to me that, that, um, that this is, because the American Libraries Association is also being on board, this is for libraries, but maybe it's separate ability for museums.
Do we need a motion to endorse?
I'm going to request a motion to chairman.
All right, support? Been moved by Ms. Timor, and supported by Mr. Fraser, uh, to endorse the, um, uh, application to Smithsonian Institute and American Library Association for the exhibit entitled Changing America, the Emancipation Proclamation, eighteen sixty-three, and the March on Washington, nineteen sixty-three. Um, all of us in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Could I ask another question? Um, what flavor should the letters of support be?
Um, well, let's take a look. It, they're supposed to be short, less than one page, or one page at most, and the, the one from the Southfield Public Schools just goes, "On behalf of the Southfield Public Schools, I am pleased to provide this letter to, to demonstrate our support for the Southfield Public Library's application for an exhibit and grant on the Smithsonian." Research shows that by providing all students with access to engaging exhibits and literature throughout the year, reading proficiency can be improved, so the schools took it from the aspect of literacy. And then they talk a little bit about how we have partnered with them to Revolution Read and the Silvery Readers Program, and, uh, she just said, "I believe that improving reading and achievement must extend beyond teaching essential skills to include student engagement and motivation." And, uh, the, the letter from, uh, William Collins talks a little bit about how the culture, and, so it is, there is some information that I can give to you.
Perhaps artists could, uh, feature our own, uh, city designation as well, as well as, uh, diverse, uh, community.
Sure.
And, and they, the more letters of support, of course, the better.
You know, sometimes handwritten letters are more effective than typed letters, because a lot of times people type letter, or, uh, and, you know, then copy it a lot.
Right. We specifically, I, I sent a, a request for support to all the members of the Department for Education, and specifically did not include any oil plate language for that reason, because I don't want them to think that this is just a, a carbon copy.
Yes.
That every assignment only, we want, we want each one to be, and they could just be three or four sentences, just saying, "I support this, because I believe that this is, was an important time in our history, and it, it's our city's, uh, demographics, culture, et cetera."
Thank you.
Do we have the address to those white letters? Do we have any-
Yes, let me repeat that again. Um, they could just be sent to Southfield Public Library exhibit, uh, support, if you want, or to Kelly Rembert, R E M B E R T, and the address is Southfield Public Library, twenty-six three hundred Evergreen Road, Southfield, Michigan, four eight oh seven six.
And when do you need them by?
We need them by October fourteenth.
Okay.
Well, that's when we have to, the application is due, so we would like them at least a couple days before that.
At least by the fall.
And they could be dropped off at the library as well.
Okay, okay, at least by the fall.
Right.
And, uh, Mr. Sharet, and then thanks, he'll see that as the letter, should not be have the council?
Yes, well, thank you.
Can I make a additional comment? Yeah, um, I'll just, uh, talk briefly, because Dave and I, I, I just recently got the opportunity to address a group that Dave Ewick is a part of, the Southeastern Michigan-
Detroit Suburban Roundtable.
Okay, yeah, okay, the Detroit Suburban Librarians Roundtable, and I got to talk a little bit about, you know, the, the revenue cuts that we have from the state, uh, in city- know, the revenue cuts that we have from the state and city government, but those same cuts are felt just as harshly in libraries, and, you know, it, this just goes to show you, as technology changes, you can't look up these pictures on the internet and get the same site, you know, these pictures of these objects on the internet and get the same experience as seeing them in person. So, you know, a library is a cultural point in the city, and it just needs to remain funded at the same, at the same ratio it has been, and I'm, I'm very proud to support this initiative, and I hope it gets to Southfield.
Aye, Mr. President, thank you so much. Mr. Scherr, anything else?
No, that is, thank you very much.
Okay. I know the attorney has an item that you need to discuss.
Thank you, Mr. President. At council at the September ninth, two thousand and three, the whole meeting, we brought before you a proposed purchase agreement by Oldham Community College to purchase the former Motel site, as the city now is the title owner of. The hotel is in the process of demolition, and the city council has offered to buy the property from the city, and as we explained in the September ninth meeting, they would reimburse the city for all the delinquent taxes that were paid by the city to acquire the property back in August two thousand and twelve, as well as all the demolition costs the city has incurred to level the, the structure and bring the property to great. However, that purchase price on the proposed purchase agreement would be capped at two point two million dollars. Administration has looked at that, looked at what the costs are, and feel pretty comfortable with those costs that we've incurred, collectively would not exceed that two point two million dollars. After the September ninth, meeting the whole, there were a couple of conferences that were made, and we tried to address those in connection with this purchase agreement. One of the concerns that was addressed that evening was that there was some indication that we wanted something from OCC to the effect that they would at least consider some kind of retail component when they develop the property at some point in the future. And there was discussion by their real estate agent at the time that they could put something in writing to the city, and I did distribute that tonight, the letter did come in, and it basically indicated that they will at least consider that, but ultimately their decision in terms of what they do with the property would be theirs, that they will at least consider it. So, that's, that's the sentence that they gave up. The second item was, was at least mentioned, and talking earlier forward tonight, there was, there was mention of what the city is doing with Nine Mile and some street scape improvements, and that maybe in terms of OCC, when they do develop the property, kind of committing to, to participate in some kind of street scape approval, I thought. I did, did talk to the DDA director in terms of, you know, what does that mean, what are the street scape improvements? The college wanted to know that before they committed to that. Apparently, right now, there is no definitive plan in terms of what those improvements might be, and we thought that potentially we could address this as part of a site plan issue when the development does occur. I have been in contact with OCC's attorney, and they are exploring that, and I needed a sense tonight, is that something council wants to include in the purchase agreement? Right now, I do not have a commitment from the college, they wouldn't participate in that, but they wanted more information, and I really needed a sensible counsel, is do you want to build that into the purchase agreement?
I would just comment, maybe else is free to, but on Nine Mile, benches, trees that were planted, at the corner of Providence Drive, and Nine Mile, the brick pavers, things to enhance the street scape. So, that was my impression. Further, and by coincidence, tonight we confirmed the reappearance of Dr. Reed from OCC, he sits on that board, he's very familiar with what the road improvements and streets, uh, street scape improvements are, so I think we have a synergy there for this, and if Mr. Suddes, our DDA director, would have anything else to add, please come to the podium, as far as the street scape.
Dave will be rehearsing. Dave will be rehearsing.
What is that?
Down to the street.
Mr. President, Madam Mayor, honorable councilmembers, this evening we had Doug Smith and Alex here, who was representing the college as well, so I'll let him make his initial comments, and the other question, have the last one.
Councilpeople appreciate the activity, I'm Doug Smith, Atlas Realty Advisors, four zero seven zero one, we're at, we're Phil Hills, Michigan, we serve as advisors to the community college in real estate transactions, acquisitions. With regards to the vendors going back and forth, we didn't really understand what the requirements were, but we'll go ahead and meet the requirements as they are set out in the future by the DEA. As long as those are the requirements that are going to be required of all developers in that area, we would absolutely, all those mandatory requirements along Nine Mile.
Mr. Suddes, your attorney, I mean, if I'm looking correct.
We believe that, obviously, that the purchase agreement proposal is a viable proposal for the city and the downtown development, where the airport is, does agree with that. We certainly, if there are retail opportunities to go along with this, and then obviously we'd like to have a chance to market the property for that to happen, that any additional development that may come of this, whether it's the straightening of Rutherford Road or additional street scape, I think can be handled at that point in time when the college makes that particular development.
Yes, Mayor. I have a question. Are you any closer to a timeline or a development of the site? And if not, do you have anticipation, like a projected window of when any type of development will be happening?
Madam Mayor, I have no knowledge to this point of any specific timeline. The trustees of the college have been pushing chancellor to sit down and kind of walk them through what his vision is for that area. He's been in conversations with a number of different community organizations that he thinks he can collaborate with as he should with us and breathe, but he has not, you know, at this point in time given us a formal proposal for timeline or specifics for the type of development. But we do think that, you know, commercial is certainly a reliable component of the campus of the town, the type of look that you want there. We just want to make sure we have the autonomy as to where it's placed and how it interacts and relates with our department, but we certainly think that students will benefit from the city from, obviously, a more formal tax base there, it's too expensive for more of a traditional college field, if you will, when there are other activities that...
Well, it sounds to me that the college may not be quite ready, but this opportunity to acquire the property has exceeded their full plans and probably contingent on getting the property, I would think.
Well, I, I wanted to say that I was one of the very, very aggressive ones, at least the, the concept of personal conduct, and I, I really do appreciate that. I'm excited about the plan, and it's not that I'm trying to say when you're going to do it, but I'm excited that it's going to happen, and the property, it, it should have been in their hands a long time ago, and it took us a long road to get here, but I know that we're excited, and I know that, and that was the question. Are there examples I plan approval as a community college as public group now?
We've been looking at that issue at length, I've actually contacted a number of zoning experts and done the research. It all hinges on whether the way that the Oakland Community College was formed is whether they're within the jurisdiction of the superintendent of public instruction. If, if in fact they are, then arguably they will be exempt from going through a site plan process. From what I understand, bus car, I don't think that they were formed in that fashion. I believe that they were formed under another statute that just creates them and creates a board of trustees and operates that, but that question is really still an open question, and I'm throwing it out there, and I'm getting a lot of different responses, so the attorney and I are, are still discussing that, but at this point it's an open issue.
Well, I, we have a follow-up relationship with OCC, and if, not that I hope you are under site plan approval, but I just hope that, you know, we're permitted to keep our commitment to work together, because that site is very important, very important to the city and, and very important to grow for OCC. I'm excited about the proposal.
We appreciate all the support from the DEA, you know, it's taken some time, but it is, it is time, we think, to move forward on this. It's very difficult to be a community college, it's growing in a place that they are, and they have several locations, we're a landmark, we're able to be one of them, and we simply run after choices in that market. We look at Southfield, it's up as it's growing, you know, location grown over forty-eight percent, I think, in the last six years, and we just don't want to find ourselves in a situation like we are in where we don't have us to grow any through.
This is exceptional. To sum up where we are then, we're talking about the Ramona Hotel, which has been an ISO for years, was, fell into the hands of the county treasurer because the owners did not pay their taxes. The city of Southfield has first right to pick up properties that are under the treasurer's control. City council, earlier this year, was it June?
Two thousand and twelve.
Two thousand and twelve, perfectly voted to obtain the property with the intent of doing something about the ISO. We then worked on having the property demolished, and now we are ready to sell it, and the deal on the table, and then we're going to have a motion on tonight, is to sell it, recover our full cost that the city has put into the property, that's securing the property and the demolition and clearing of the site. And OCC has agreed to purchase the property, so we're entertaining through a motion this evening, the transfer, the sale of the property, Bill.
Sub move. But it has to have the writer of not to exceed two point two million dollars.
Correct.
That will be their cap.
Yes, two point two million, full, full recovery, not to exceed...
Not to exceed that cap.
Right. So, we have the motion by Mr. Fraser, supported by Mr. Moss.
And the, uh, part of, I can I...
And we have a, you have a comment?
Well, I, I do. Even though it's Nine Mile, it's seen as an entry to our city, so I think you know that. I, I would hope that we could be involved in some of the decision making, at least express our, you know, ideas as to what that area could look like. I'd like to see what that requires, if we're not required to be. Still, I think it would be a good relationship to include us in that discussion, and I think that's probably the university feels, but I think it's a good idea because it is, we look at it, a lot of people look at it as a gateway to Southfield, so collaboration would be a good thing.
No, I think we're agreeing, that's the way it's operating, or...
Right, right. I just want to ask about that, because it means a lot to us that it looks good, it means a lot to you that it looks good, and we want it to be an asset for the city to grow here in the school, so.
Do you have a discussion? Hearing none, then I'll call a session. All those in favor?
Aye.
My motion is approved. Thank you. The attorney will clean up the paperwork and get it out. All right. We're now going to move on to the clerk, treasurer, planner, investor, engineer, clerk. I understand you have something you'd like to say.
Oh, yes, thank you. I am a top graduate of Southfield High School. I just wanted to let council know that this past weekend, we held our forty-year class reunion in the city of Southfield. We had alumni that traveled as far as Israel, Washington, California, Texas, Florida, South Carolina, North Carolina, Georgia, New York, Boston, Jersey, Illinois, and Indiana to join in the festivities. We, I was fortunate enough to convince my committee that this was going to be a welcome back to Southfield event. We started out on Friday at Mr. Joe's. We thought we were only going to make up forty people, we ended up with over a hundred.
Wow.
From there, we did a tour of Southfield High School. I think only twenty people registered, but I think approximately forty turned out. Mr. Moore gave an unbelievable tour of the school. Council President Cyro was also there, and the alumni were just shocked as to how the school had changed, and they were like, "Why wasn't it like this when we were here forty years ago?" From there, we went to the Westin Hotel for a throwing buffet, which was enjoyed by over a hundred different people. I'm happy to say that over thirty alumni secured rooms that evening at the hotel, and then we had a farewell brunch on Sunday, which was attended by over fifty people. So, the class was seven, eight, or three, came back to Southfield, we supported Southfield, and I was so proud because they were just shocked how clean our city was, how beautiful our city was, and over brunch, they were totally confused, because they're like, "Mr. Joe's wasn't that good, what happened to Howard Johnson?" You know, Southfield High School, where, where was our gym again? So, you know, we've changed over the years and it's just become a beautiful city, and I was just so proud, and they were so happy. In fact, they wanted to do this again in another two years, and I'm like, "Well, we'll think about that," but, so, I just wanted to share that with council. And the Westin Hotel, a hotel just a fabulous job. Thank you.
Mr. Planner, anything? Okay. Well, on our schedule, we do have a meeting next week with Provence Hospital, thirtieth of September, and then we're meeting on the seventh, I believe, seventh of October, right? And that is also the night of our annual community pride presentation, starting at five o'clock. Mr. Fraser, you have something?
Yes, this is something I probably should have come up in during council session, or council course, but I forgot about it, and Mr. Moss reminded me that something else happened at the Michigan Municipal League this past week, and that was the attorneys, the municipal attorneys, created a trophy, a traveling trophy in honor of Jack Barris, and each year the attorneys get together after a big meeting, and they have a bocce ball tournament, and Jack was very involved, and had loved to play bocce ball, and in honor of Jack, they created this traveling trophy that the winner of the trophy gets to keep it for a year, it's sort of like the Stanley Cup, that they get their name on it, and they, they get to keep it for a year, but then they have to bring it back, and whoever wins it the next year gets their name on it. But because Jack was so involved and so well-respected throughout Michigan for his understanding and interpretation of the law, and I've heard it said before, if Jack says it, you can take it to the Supreme Court, and they recognized that professionalism in Jack, and I think it's a great honor for not only Jack, but for the city of Southfield, that he was our city attorney, and I'd like to share that.
Just to add to that, they actually presented an identical cup to Judy Barris, and she later received those, it was very touching, and it was at the, the Mamas Conference that is associated with that amount, it's very nice.
To council, we have a lot of paper in this binder that we didn't get to use this evening, so I would suggest we save it for the twenty-first of October, the plan, so if you want to leave these with the clerk. If there's nothing else to come before the body, then we are adjourned.